Okay, you got seven o'clock, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I'll call the meeting to order. The Select Board Meeting, November 8th, 2021. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome the students from Castleton University, David Blow's class. It's a pleasure to have you with us this evening. Hope we'll do something productive that you'll approve of. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
A second.
And a second is their discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The agenda is approved. We have quite a few minutes here. Want to take them individually?
I would ask that we take them individually because there's a couple that I missed.
Okay. The first is the Select Board Minutes of Monday, September 13th, 2021. The second is a special meeting, Monday, October 11th. The third is another meeting on Monday, October 11th, which is not the special. The next one is Monday, October 25th, and a special meeting that we had on October 25th, same evening. Let's consider the first one.
Here's our numbers, Chairman.
You got them all?
The minutes in there, you got November 1st in there as well.
November 1st?
For the ARPA funding.
Okay, let me look through.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes for Monday, September 23rd, 2021, as presented.
I'll second.
Second. Discussion.
I'm sorry. Mr. Combs, what date did you just?
I thought I said September 20th. September 13th is what I meant to say.
That's what I was hoping you meant to say.
I don't know what I did say, but that's not what I.
Okay.
I'll amend my motion to say September 13th, 2021.
Okay, and we had a second to that?
I have a second.
Discussion.
Perhaps I should put my glasses on.
First off, in the list of attendees, we're using the word "missing" to identify Mr. Spalding. I would prefer absent. Hope that's okay, Bob?
Thank you. I like missing better.
On the second page, starting with the sixth paragraph, we have a lot of unnecessary underlining. I like when the motion and second and action on the motion is underlined, but in this case, we just, that's not what's being underlined. The, I guess it's page five, third paragraph from the bottom, we refer to the Planning Commission, but we don't capitalize Planning Commission. I think we should. And that's it for me on September 13th's minutes.
Other corrections or additions? Dick? No?
Bob?
No, I wasn't here, so.
I'm good.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion with the corrections indicate by saying aye.
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 I abstain.
Okay, we'll move on to the special meeting.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, we'll make a motion to accept the minutes for the Select Board, the special Select Board Meeting of October 11th, 2021, as presented.
I'll second.
Second. Discussion. Joe?
Same thing about Mr. Spalding being missing. Prefer absent. And this is, I would not ask that these minutes be changed, but I noticed that we're being inconsistent in how we reference people who are identified in the minutes. We talk about Mr. Rayland, Dr. Ken Flowers, Nancy Mark, Jonas Rosenthal. I think we should standardize the convention, probably calling everybody Mr. or Mrs. or Ms.'s. That's it for me.
That's it for you. Any other corrections? All those in favor of the motion with the corrections indicate by saying aye.
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 Move on?
I abstain too.
You're abstaining?
Yeah, yeah, I wasn't here for that either.
Mr. Chairman, we'll make a motion that we accept the minutes for Monday, October 11th, for the regular Select Board Meeting, October 11th, 2021.
We have a motion to second. Discussion. Joe?
Same comment about missing. The, in the historic data, there's kind of a strange underlining before 0.9%. I'm not exactly sure what that should be, but it doesn't look correct to me.
It is not correct. That should have been, I didn't redo the math, but it should have been somewhere in the neighborhood of 15 or 16%. And the 21, 22 number is incorrect. That should have been somewhere, that was also somewhere in the 15% range.
I can go back and look at the tape, Mr. Chairman. I took this off the tape, the audio, the reason that there was nothing, there was something before that 0.9. I couldn't hear what it was.
I could go back to my notes, which I still have, and give you the exact numbers that I came up with, but it was just simple arithmetic, actually, simple algebra. But anyways.
One more, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
The, on the second page, the, under Select Board Comments and Concerns, we say, Mr. Mark also suggested that John Burke is invited. I think that should be be invited, and that's it.
That's it?
Yes.
Okay. Any other corrections?
On the, on the second page, the very, where it says adjourn, I don't like what it says. It says, Mr. Holden made a motion to adjourn at 7:30, 6:00 PM, and then it has Combs. It should be Mr. Combs. At the very last line, you see what I'm talking?
Yep.
Someplace else in these minutes, it said, it said manager too. It didn't say manager, and I can't seem to find it right now.
Okay. Anything else, additions on this, corrections?
I'm good.
You're good? Okay, all those in favor with the corrections indicate by saying aye.
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 I'm going to abstain again because I wasn't there for the second meeting either.
Okay, then.
You're missing.
Mr. Chairman, we'll make a motion.
Don't go too fast here because Mike is taking the notes.
I'm good. You caught up, Mike?
He's trying to.
Oh, your stuff.
Yeah.
I'm going to make a motion that we accept the minutes for the regular Select Board Meeting on Monday, October 25th, 2021, as presented.
I'll second.
Sorry, that's the regular meeting?
That is correct. Oh, I did the wrong one first. That's okay. We can do that one first. Sorry.
So we're on regular meeting?
We're on the regular meeting.
Oh.
I got the tail wagging the dog, but no big deal.
Those are the motion and the second. Corrections. Joe?
Bottom, bottom paragraph, page one, fourth line from the bottom, Mr. Mark, I think the word noted should come next, that the board skipped over the approval agenda. On page three, fourth paragraph from the bottom, third line, the blades are 143 feet, so the circle diameter sweep would, I think that we need the word be in there, be 186 feet. And in the second from bottom paragraph, after Sherry Grabowski, comma, Hubbardton, comma, should have another comma in there, asked, and on the fourth page, last line, says that Mr. Mark, Mr. Spalding, Mr. Combs were in favor, Mr. Holden was not in favor, but it says the motion carried four to zero. Presumably, that should be four to one.
Four to one. Anything else?
That's it.
Dick?
I'm good.
Bob?
Mr. Chairman, who seconded that motion?
I did.
Mr. Holden.
Right, Dick. We're on to you, Bob.
I'm good.
You all set?
I think so.
I'm good.
Mike, you're good. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those accepting the minutes, that is corrected.
Aye.
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 Moving on.
Okay, this, Mr. Chairman, we'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the special meeting concerning CVS Castleton Village School for Monday, October 25th, 2021, as presented.
Second.
Second. Discussion. Joe?
Under explanation by the Select Board, one, two, the fourth line, articles should be plural, should be articles of agreement. Three, four lines later, we say, what happens if the district decides it no longer wants to operate an education program in the school? And we say, that was transferred to us in part of the form, the rest of that sentence, in my opinion, that, that last sentence that starts, that was, is very confusing and probably mistaken. So I would recommend that we say, if the district decides it no longer wants to operate an education program in a school that was transferred to it, period. In the next paragraph.
All right, hold up a second, Joe.
Sorry. I'll give you these, Mike, if you'd like.
Okay, that'll be fine.
You okay, Mike?
Yeah.
Okay, Joe.
Next paragraph, we again say article, when it should be articles of agreement. Page four, one, two, page three, under the section that includes John Burke's comments, fifth line says, the board has asked SVUUSD and has not turned back. The next sentence should, we need a new paragraph to start the next question, and even should be capitalized, I assume. Two lines later, we have Mr. Lamie's personal opinion. That appears to be another answer. That should have a paragraph in front of it. And finally, the answer given to Mary McIntyre has the possessive form of its, not it apostrophe s. That's it.
Okay. Dick?
Good.
Bob?
I'm good.
You're good? Mike?
I'm good.
You're good. All those in favor of accepting the minutes with the corrections indicate by saying aye.
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 Guess what? We're down to the last one.
We're deal.
Mr. Chairman, we'll make a motion that we accept the minutes for the special Select Board Meeting for Monday, November 1st, 2021, as presented.
I'll second.
Second. Discussion. I'm glad you have time to do this, Joe.
Second page, third line from the bottom, the, we have a sentence starting, the goal of water, wastewater. I think that is an answer to the question that preceded it, so I would suggest a hard, a new paragraph and an A, capital A, period. And dot stop.
Okay, Dick? All set? Bob?
I'm all set.
Mike?
Good.
All those in favor of accepting the minutes with corrections indicate by saying aye.
Aye. I'm going to abstain on that one too, Mike.
Okay. Bob, I noticed on that one, you're absent, not missing.
Yeah, they got it right that time.
That'd be me.
I must have been found.
Moving on to citizens' comments and/or concerns, items not on the agenda. Are there any citizens who wish to address the board? Items not on the agenda. Yes?
Hi, I am Jay Nickel, and I reside at 999 Listville Road. And I was up here since they finally have decided that my issues over there with the slate quarry are a public danger with the rock flying. And also, I addressed you a couple meetings ago, Jim, about whether you had looked into whether those illegally dumped tires had been picked up, and you said you didn't remember. And I refreshed your memory when I brought it into the office and showed you the letter that you had written to me, and I was just wondering, since no one's ever gotten back to me, if that issue has ever been resolved, or if you actually had that.
Are we talking about the tires that you're referring to?
Tires illegally dumped.
I believe that the owner of the quarry indicated, how long ago did that happen?
Quite a while ago.
Quite a while ago. Okay, I believe the owner of the quarry indicated that he attempted to locate them, but was unsuccessful. If you would like me to come down again, I'll be happy to make an appointment and do a site visit for you.
Okay, because I did address that numerous times, and I haven't had anybody get back.
All right.
And then also, I wanted to address the town. I said that I wanted to do something about filing for nuisance with the slate quarry. Actually, now that we have established that it is a public safety hazard with that rock flying, and that they had been re-permitted to use that piece of property, I would like something done. Because, you know, after all these new reports have come in, we have found that they are drilling into old mining shafts and other drill sites, and this has happened four times now, where we have had fly rock leave that quarry, land out on our property, land in the road, hit houses across the street, and went through people's roofs and were hanging out the second story. I think this town needs to step up and at least follow some of the rules and regulations they have, which are, you know, as regards to explosives, et cetera.
That it?
I think that's it, but it's a really important thing. I mean, what are they going to do before somebody gets killed? I mean, this town's got to stick, stand up and at least follow the rules and regulations, and these people should not be exempt when they have already blasted four times and had fly rock.
Okay, Jane, thank you very much. I'm sure we'll have the appropriate departments.
Interest for once.
Can I finish? We'll have the appropriate departments investigate it and see if there is a challenge jurisdiction, and if so, what it is.
I hope so, because four times now, I mean, this is not acceptable.
Okay, we got it. Thank you very much for your comments, Jane. Anyone else who wishes to address the board? Lyle?
Yes, yeah, are we on the agenda of Chamber of Economic Development? I apologize.
You're on the agenda, yes. Anyone else who wishes to address the board on?
Hey, Jim, just a comment.
Sure.
Reference to Jane's comment.
Sure.
You are aware that the, there was a citation issued to the quarry in question, right?
I am aware of it through reading the Rutland Herald.
All right. Just wanted to make sure you knew about it.
I'm sure, yep. Are the other board members aware that a citation was issued?
No, I wasn't.
I wasn't.
Okay. We'll make a copy of it so that you'll have it.
That'd be nice.
Thank you.
Anything else on this? Any other citizens who wish to address the board? Items not on the agenda. We have anybody up? We don't have it, okay? If not, we'll move on. Chamber and Economic Development of Rutland Region, Lyle, you're up.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mike, did you lose power?
I don't know, yeah. First, I know that it's not lost on us, all the people that are out here in the audience from Castleton University. I'm excited, and I emphasize university, I'm excited that Castleton University has students that are out doing what you folks are doing. I came down from the mountain a little while ago, I was up at the management program up there, the Hunter Valley Management Program, equal number of students up there doing great work, so I hope we're, we're in good stead. About a year ago, I went to your Economic Development Committee to talk about our regional marketing initiative, and at that point, we talked about where there might be funding available for that, and if you'll allow it, we have some statistics we would like to show you about that. But I guess I need your guidance tonight, and your guidance is how we should ask you for funding. I thought we were doing that through the Economic Development Group, and probably I did something wrong and got wires crossed, so I talked to Mike, and Mike said, that's not in our budget, at least that's what I think Mike said. And so I'm here to talk about how we might get some money in the budget, if you would like to support that. But first, I wanted to take just a couple minutes to show you some statistics about how successful that has been so far, and I'd like to show you how we're spending our money, if you would allow me to do that, Mr. Chair.
Certainly.
All right, and Kim Ruth is here with me. Kim is our Communications and Community Engagement Manager, and she has some statistics she would like to show you. And primarily, this is about, more for our viewing audience, because you probably all know this, but Rutland County is the second oldest county in the state of Vermont, and we are slowly losing population, and the goal of the Regional Marketing Initiative is to change that trend.
Thank you.
And part of changing that trend is retention of the people who are in the audience today. So Kim's going to talk to you a little bit about what we've been doing, and I can tell you how we've been spending the money that we've been gathering.
Thank you. So I'm going to highlight a couple high-level data points for our marketing initiative, which are on the front page of your handout. We are doing extensive work to increase our data collection for regional marketing initiatives. As I'm sure you can imagine, it's taken us a few years to start to collect this data because this isn't something that happens overnight. So sometimes it takes individuals and families several years or months to move across the country in many cases, so we're really excited to be able to have this information this year and be able to share with you. So there's six high-level points on the front page. We are wrapping up year five, entering year six of what is intended to be a 10-year plan. So since the start of the initial marketing initiative, we've seen over 100 individuals move into Rutland County. That equals out to about 50 families. So some of these people are single, some of them are a family diversity, which is phenomenal. So 100 individuals equalling out to about 50 families. New families have moved into over 10 towns in Rutland County. Full disclosure, many of them are moving into the city of Rutland. A win for Rutland City is a win for every town within Rutland County. We are trying really hard to get more representation through our concierge program to have representatives from each town in Rutland County. We are proud, we have one from Castleton. He's a retired individual who has worked with several couples. They are still trying to figure out where they want to land, but just a couple weeks ago, he took another couple, has a tour around Rutland County, and he brought them over to Castleton and made sense of how they're doing. So we're anxious to see where this couple lands, but fingers crossed that they pick Castleton. So if you know anyone who is interested in volunteering our program, just let us know. Our concierge program is a completely complimentary program for individuals and families that are looking to move here to answer questions that they might have about the region. What is it like to raise kids here? What are your educational systems? Which town have X resources that I'm looking for? We have a great program. Every single individual and family that comes through our program participates in this, so it's widely successful. We have over 25 very active volunteers. And then the last point is the individuals and families that are moving here are primarily remote workers, which I'm sure is no surprise to you, given the pandemic, but we're also seeing an increase in healthcare workers and nonprofit leaders, as well as several others. So they're definitely entering our workforce, which we're happy to report. On the back of your handout, really quickly, we are in the fourth quarter for 2021 for our marketing campaign. This sheet on the top half represents which areas we are marketing, Facebook and Instagram search, LinkedIn, Killington TV, and display ads. You'll see a percentage in the middle of the sheet that represents the amount of money we spend for that media buy. So we use 51% of our media buys are going to Facebook and Instagram, 17% to paid search, et cetera. You'll see the estimated reach. For example, Facebook and Instagram, we're expecting to reach about 265,000 people to 325,000. So we're a few weeks into Q4, so we'll start to see some of these numbers in the next Few other general real Rutland statistics, we have over 3,000 followers on Facebook. And our email marketing, we have over 4,600 recipients with approximately a 20% open rate, which is really strong for email marketing with a campaign like this. So those are our kind of crash, high-level data points for, as we wrap up year five. And if anyone has any questions, happy to take them, but feel free to hold on to this and let us know if you have any other questions.
Don't go away now. Let's see. Any questions from the board? Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
We don't know the total number of people who have actually moved here, because obviously, people don't need permission to move, and there are many people that are coming here that are aware of here because of the work that we're doing with marketing. We're aware of the statistics that Kim talked about, because they have come directly through our secret sauce, which is the concierge program. So you might be asking yourself, how much do we spend, or have we spent the last five years? And it's just over $600,000. Actually, just over $540,000. We've raised $600,000 plus. I always, when I look at a P and L, I always go down to the bottom, and I look, okay, well, how much do you have left, Lyle? So that's how much we've got left, about $50,000. And that will carry us through the next few months as our business partners and our municipalities begin to provide us funding into the next year. And any good select board would say, okay, show us who's actually giving you money and spell it out for us, where's that money going? So that's what this will show you here. You'll find that our business partners are providing the lion's share, about $360,000 of that total $600 plus. It won't surprise you who's on that list, because those are our big businesses. And you won't be surprised that Rutland City is providing the most money towards this. What we've been asking towns to do, and the city, is would you please provide a dollar per person, which would be just over, I think, 4,500, like, I'm just guessing.
Just short of that, short of that right now.
Some towns put it on the ballot, some towns put it in their budgets, as you can see where it's coming from. And then down at the bottom, where it's going to, with marketing, is our marketing firm that we use. And you might say, as you get on the backs, you look down near the bottom, and you see something like Vermont Tap House, and you say, Lyle, what are you going to bring them out for a beer? Well, we had a lady come from California, and she flew in, her expense, of course, and we toured her around, and she and her family are now going to buy a home in Killington, not in Castleton this time, but in Killington. And so for a little bit of pizza, we feel like we got a hit. And the nice thing about the concierge program is that people come through, we interview the concierge folks that work on that committee, so that when this person came from California, we knew she had two kids, she liked to ski, she was an educator, and so we connected her with three educators, two of which like to ski, two of which had children, so that we could answer their questions accurately. So the guidance that we're looking for tonight is the process that you would like us to follow to request funding from you in the coming year. And if you were to say, Lyle, how much would we want? Well, it'd be great if we had a dollar a person, but obviously, that is totally up to you, because you're a member. Do you have questions?
Questions for Lyle? Jonas, zoning administrator?
Yeah, I believe one of the allocations, and I don't remember us being billed last year, called or whatever, but I remember a year or two ago, the town's contribution came from the ZILP planning, planning office, of $750, I believe, is a municipal contribution. And let me just say, the program that Kim worked on, it's called, it was called Real Buck, Castleton Real Bucks, and that was a state program to help businesses that were suffering, were in, had limited hours, and their sales were down, and so on. And she worked with, I believe, six communities and five, five in Rutland County, of which Castleton was one. That offered discounts on purchased services for about nine or 10 businesses in Castleton. And we had, well, you'd say we, she had to do an analysis of all of the activities and all the dollars spent by 100 new shoppers, I believe it was 100 new shoppers for Castleton from out of town, and which generated, I think it was $40,000 in new, in new dollars spent for Castleton businesses. So anyway, that was. So anyway, that was, that was, I thought it was an exciting program because a lot of the businesses kept asking, you know, where could they get more coupons, where could they get more coupons? So I thought the fact that reading the analysis of the new shoppers that it generated for those nine businesses or 10 businesses was successful. So I just want to comment on that. And I do want to comment on, from time to time, I will pick somebody's brain, I keep calling it Reddit, about trends and statistics and things like that. So I would recommend that the select board consider the annual allocation that other municipalities make.
Thank you, Jonas. Questions from the board? Joe, did you have something?
I did not.
Did not. Dick? Bob? Mike? No?
Good.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Lyle.
In case you want to know a little bit more about what we do.
Mike, you know that you're not broadcasting.
No. That's, you get a bad power outlet, so I move it around to a different outlet that's not charging.
To find our annual report in here, it'll talk about what Jonas was talking about and some of the other things. And should I connect with Mike about?
Yes.
The process to move forward?
Yep.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for the information. Thank you, Kim. Moving on. Cedar Rack needs a new member and chairperson. Town manager, Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since I put that on the agenda, I was called by a member of the Cedar Rack who is considering or wishes to move forward and be the chairman of that. She just wanted to reach out and talk to Jonas first to make sure, she wanted to know what the commitments were. But she's already on it. It's Mary McIntyre. And I gave her your information to contact you.
Okay. Is that it?
Yeah, that's just, that was the, that transpired since I wrote the agenda.
Joe?
Does that mean that we have a vacancy, though?
There is.
So should we post notice of that and invite applications?
Yep. Okay.
Quick comment, Jim?
Yep.
We did appoint several new members a few months ago, and some of those new members just didn't show up. And so recruitment is, there's more than one vacancy, Joe.
Okay. Any other comments on this item? Not, we'll move on. Injured pedestrian in Castleton Village, temporary fix and affect notification. Mike?
Without going into the finer details, Mr. Chairman, just to let you know, I did file a claim with VLCT, and I received confirmation today that they received it, so more to follow. I did send her an email and let her know that we're going to put some barriers there. I'll talk to the business owners for the winter because we really can't do much about excavating that area and finishing a curb. So it was just, she fell off the curb because it abruptly ends, it's like a driveway cut there in front of Michelle's Creations, and she fell to the ground, got injured, broke her ankle, had surgery, and has been in constant contact with me to make sure that the town is aware of it and that we do something so it doesn't happen to someone else.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the information and the update. Police department, purchase lease, new vehicle, town manager, and I believe the police chief?
He's, he was on, when I lost power.
Did we lose him?
I'm trying to get him back on. But you have the, his proposal in front of you for a new cruiser. He is obviously, by looking at the dollar figures, he is short money to do that. He's aware of that, and his response was he'd like to do a lease program rather than purchase it outright. And I know that the board has, in the past, had taken issue with leases or had questions about it, so I wanted to bring it before the board for your input to it. And hopefully, I just sent the chief, he's trying to get back in.
Want to wait a second or two, see if he gets back or?
Sure.
Well, we could.
Discuss it.
Yeah, we could discuss it. Questions, comments from the board? Dick?
The first question I have is, we have four Ford Explorers, and our original plan was to purchase a police car every other year for an eight-year cycle. Is that still correct?
Correct.
Okay. So we have four vehicles here, the oldest of which is six years old. Am I correct in that as well?
Yeah, for the Ford Explorer, yes. 2015.
So that's less than the eight-year cycle, for starters. Second thing is, how many hours a week do each of these cars actually get used? Particularly the two, the 2015 and the 2020 that are assigned to one officer?
That's something that the chief would have to answer as far as hours go, because if you're looking at days of, how many hours in a day, or how many times they sit there and idle?
Well.
Or used per day.
How many hours a week do these cars run? It seems to me that it's possible that you could lighten up on the use of the car, the 2015, and use the 2020 a little more, possibly, to get into this eight-year cycle. We can't fund the reserve account to replace a car every other year and then expect to replace a car, you know, replace five cars in six years instead of five cars, or four cars in six years rather than four cars in eight years.
We're a little off the cycle if you look at the years of the vehicles, so I don't, I think that 2000, buying one in 2023 with delivery in 22, I'm sorry, with delivery in 2023 would help us get back onto a better cycle. These cars are well-maintained. I'll give the town and the chief credit that we do maintain these cars, so I don't see we're holding that car another year is going to be a detriment to the police department. And the three, in three years, he'll have enough money to both purchase the vehicle and to equip it. Because if you've seen on his quote, it was $12,896.98 to equip the car. So we're putting $17,000 a year in there, which still falls short of buying the new car because it was $35,000 and change. So a third, by going a third year, now we're getting close to the purchasing the vehicle and equipping it. And I know there's some different thoughts on equipping it, I'm just gonna, I'm just throwing out the raw numbers right now. And if we're going to get back on that cycle, then I think waiting a year would not hurt.
That would be my first choice. The second thing we as a board and you as a manager need to look at is if it really in fact costs $48,000 a year, or $48,000 to replace a vehicle, not 35, then are we either adequately funding our reserve account, or do we need to come up with another budget line item to cover these costs? Because you can't bank $17,000 a year every year and then expect to spend $24,000 a year. It just doesn't work.
The math does not work.
So we either got to get smarter, or we got to budget it properly, or something. And I'm not a big fan of deficit spending or leasing to buy if we can afford to pay cash, which we had been doing. I guess I'm done with my rant now.
Joe?
I would agree with Mr. Combs' point in general, except that I think we also should consider the blue book value of whichever car is being retired.
Good point.
That's a part of the equation.
Okay. Mike?
I agree with Mr. Combs. First of all, I do not want to get into leasing. I don't like leases, and I think there's nothing good of them. Second of all, with the, with the new cars, and even with the 15, all these new vehicles are good for, a lot of them, or they're running them 200, 300,000 miles. So at $128,000 and what the town manager's got done saying that they've been excellent or well-maintained, I don't see nothing wrong with putting another $100,000 on that 2015. I don't think we're going to be anywhere in trouble with another $100,000 at least on that car. And I just, I still have a problem with the 12, almost $13,000 to equip this. I realize that stuff's expensive, but because you're making it police, the markup is ridiculous. But I'm wondering, any way possible, is there ways we can save some of the stuff? I mean, I realize the lights and the light bars and stuff like that, if they're not broke, why fix them? So I don't know why we couldn't move them to another vehicle and try to save some money on some, I mean, I know the wiring harnesses could be an issue, but a lot of the stuff, I don't see why we couldn't use over.
Bob?
Two things I want to hear from the police chief before we make any decisions, which we would in anyways. And I'd like to see the value of that 2015 right now. But I kind of agree with what Mr. Combs said and what Mr. Holden said.
So I do, if I may. Mike, as a police commissioner, I would like to know how many hours a week each of these cars is actually run. I gotta, I gotta believe that if we lighten up the use on the 2015 and use the two or new vehicles more, we could. Particularly if a vehicle is assigned to one officer, is there a reason why more than one person can't use a car?
No, besides the chief usually, because he takes it home, but.
Well, that's a separate issue. The chief needs to have a vehicle that he takes home, so if he has to respond, he can.
But other than that?
Totally makes sense.
There isn't a reason.
Okay. It sounds like the consensus of the board is that they don't wish to move forward on this issue until we have more information.
And perhaps to delay this purchase for a year.
Pardon?
Perhaps to delay this purchase for a year. I think I heard some interest in that as well.
Is the rest of the board members agreeable to that?
Well, I wouldn't make the decision right now. I still want to hear from the chief.
Okay.
See where he stands. But I like that idea.
Is it?
So we can get back on track, what Mike was saying. Absolutely.
Well, I think in addition, I'm not opposed to waiting a year. That would be preferable in my mind at this point, but once again, I need to hear from the chief, need to give him a chance to, he deserves to have an opportunity to change my mind.
Sure.
And I want to know some more data. I hate to micromanage, but I'd like to know just how much these vehicles are actually used.
Mike, can you get that information to the chief? Since we can't get him on? And get that information from him back to the board members?
Okay.
Okay?
And I'm certainly willing to listen to the chief as soon as technology allows us to do that.
Sure. He's going to try to get back in. He just said he tried to get back in, he can't.
Can't do it? Okay. All right. Shall we move on? Castleton Village School, select board, next step. Joe, you've done a great deal of research on this, and I believe you have some information for us.
Yes. It's pretty clear that there were a number of questions that people had that we had at our public meeting that we weren't able to answer. Some of them probably need to be answered by our lawyer. And I just thought that in order to keep the public information campaign and our own education moving forward, perhaps we should make some decisions, if not tonight, in the near future. One would be to give the questions that I have identified as legal and policy questions to one of our lawyers and ask that individual to get back to us on a, you know, reasonable timeframe. I think the issue of looking at the deferred maintenance needs above and beyond the quarter million that Chris Cole acknowledges are there, I think is an important one. We had questions at the public meeting about whether, for example, there's asbestos that would have to be removed or abated. That could change the total cost of deferred maintenance quite a bit. And it occurred to me that it would probably be desirable as well to have a conversation with representatives of the Hubbardton Select Board, because we, I think, have some ideas about how to proceed and what the process should be. But given that they are part owners of the village school building, I think it would be desirable to have some early conversations with them and see if we can all get on the same page about process.
Okay. You want to take each item? Does the board have any objections to hiring an attorney to research the information that we need?
None whatsoever.
Seeing none?
No objection.
authorize you to have someone to evaluate the deferred maintenance? I believe the last that we heard from Slate Valley was that they were interested in sharing the cost. They would pay a third. Hubbardton was supposed to pay a third, and Castleton was supposed to pay a third. Their estimate was a total amount of $15,000. So it'll be five Hubbardton, five for Castleton, and five for Slate Valley. I don't believe that's a firm figure, but it's just, it's just an estimate. Joe?
I spoke with Nancy Mark, a relation, and they had an appraisal done of the maintenance issues at the library, and that cost them, well, it didn't cost them, it cost historic preservation $5,000, and they had to pay a percentage of that. But I have the contact information of that individual if it turns out that we don't have others in mind who would be good at that job.
Were they satisfied, obviously, with the qualifications of the individual?
Extremely. Extremely, yes.
Any thoughts on that from the board members?
I won't pretend to know anyone qualified to do that, so I'd be more than willing to accept a recommendation from you.
Right. And I don't know, others may have ideas as well, but that was the one possible.
Who would, who would, who would hire the firm or, and/or individual?
Well, this is just my personal opinion. I mean, if one of us were buying a house and we wanted to have it checked out, we would expect to pay the fee for that, I think. Now, because the district recognizes that they have allowed a lot of deferred maintenance to accrue, they're willing to kick in. But I think since we are, in effect, the client, I would, I would suggest that the town be prepared to pay this fee and charge the district a share of it, and if they're amenable, Hubbardton, a share of it.
And if they're not?
Well, that, I think we have to consider that, you know, in advance of making any commitments.
Sure.
But I would expect that since this is, this building has real value to them as well as to us, I would assume that they'd be prepared to pay for a portion of it, maybe a proportion that reflects their ownership stake, which we believe might be 11%.
Okay. Is that agreeable to the board?
Absolutely. I think we should let Joe contact this person and move forward with this.
Well, I'm happy to, I don't want to get personally in the middle of this, but I'd be happy to give the information about this individual to Mike and ask him to reach out.
Okay. Sounds good. Any objections to that?
I think the first thing we need is an, is a estimative cost.
Exactly.
Perhaps more accurate than what.
See what we're getting into.
Right. I think, going back just for a second, I think that in hiring an attorney, we're moving along towards a vote in March. We're now into November. I would think that it would be, it would be important for the attorney to get back to us, not at his or her leisure, but as soon as possible.
We have to have a warning out in mid-January, is that correct?
Yeah. Mid to late January, that's correct. We don't have that much time.
And correct me if I'm wrong, this is more for Joe than you, Jim, is the vote to close the school is a school vote, but from the school board, correct?
Yes.
So that's going to happen whether we do anything or not? Is that correct?
Yes.
We as a board?
Yes.
So what we're trying to do is get our ducks in a row as far as the vote to purchase the school or not.
Well, I think that it's, the two decisions, you know, close and/or buy are so interrelated that I think we have to be proactive in trying to put information out into the community about the consequences of both decisions. Both the decision to close and the consequence of the decision to buy. And as I say here in point number eight. And as, as I say here in point number eight, um, I mean, my, my recommendation is that we actually reach out to all of the key, uh, groups of the community, uh, at least all the ones we have time to get to. And I'm personally willing to, uh, do some of that, uh, with you, with other board members, uh, that have the time, and, uh, you know, of course, I wouldn't go out with Joe's message, I'd try to go out with the board's message. But I, I do think we can't sit back and just assume that with a couple of front porch forum posts, people are going to understand what's at stake here.
That's correct.
I agree with everything you just said.
Anything else on this, this part here?
No, my point was just that I think we need to move on this. I agree with Joe and that we need to, because it's going to happen whether we do anything or not, so we better do it.
Definitely, yeah.
Right.
Okay, the third item, um, designating two representatives to reach out and to meet with representatives of Hubbardon Select Board again as soon as possible. Joe, since you've done a lot of work on this, would you be willing to, once again, step forward?
Sure.
Sure. Good. Is there another board member who would volunteer to work with Joe on this?
I'm willing. Unless one of you guys want to do it, I'll do it.
Go ahead, Dick.
Go ahead, Dick, you've got a whole lot more time than we do.
That's not true right now.
Oh, maybe not right now, but.
Okay.
If you're willing, Mr. Combs.
Yeah, we're drafted, Dick, so Joe and, and Dick will work on that. Okay, anything else on this? Managers' report.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, you have the police chief on now. If you do, you want to keep it tabled or you want to?
Keep it tabled, yeah, yeah.
Hey, Chief, um, they're going to keep it tabled, we're up to come back this one. We're almost on the meeting now.
You say almost done?
Before we move on, Jim, the question occurs to me is do we need, does, do Mr. Mark and I need, uh, any sort of authorization from the Select Board officially to do this?
Believe you have it.
Or are we good to go?
Good to go, as far as I'm concerned.
Good to go. Okay, moving on. Managers' report. Change hats, Mike.
Yep. So you, you have the report, um, there's only a couple of things that were in yellow. Hopefully those showed up on your copies or on mine.
They did.
Um, I don't think the, uh, this is the sewer commissioners, on page three goes into page four, reference, uh, sewer lines. I think that's probably a board of sewer commissioners, um, question, uh, for this meeting. Um, it was talking about, uh, use of ARPA funds, um, for extension of, uh, of sewer lines, so you want to address it now, Mr. Chairman, or you want to wait till a sewer commission?
Wait for the sewer meeting.
All right. Um, on page five, crack ceiling update, um, the, the purchase orders in front of you, um, Nikon did finish the work on East Harbor Road and Drake Road. Uh, on, uh, still on page five under Town Office and other buildings, the fire station. I have reached out to, um, Paul and Nikki McClure, uh, from McClures and Construction, to get back in there and give me an estimate, uh, for the water damage, uh, and I, they haven't been back yet, so it's, it's got to keep bugging them to come in there. Uh, that and the, give me a quote to insulate the eaves for the, at the fire station, so nothing further report, but the, it, there was water damage, and that's also been, um, input into Vermont leagues of cities and towns are passive or insurance claim. Uh, on page six, number 10, Fire Department, and then under Operations, I gave you kind of a lowdown, uh, or synopsis of what's going on right now. They, they're trying to, they put out the bid, uh, or solicited, um, quotes, I should say, um, from three different vendors for fire apparatus, and they've received two back. So their, their goal still is to come before the Select Board, um, with a proposal to purchase a new vehicle. Um, what I've said in here was the grants just opened up, and I think it's a, we need to apply for the grant, that's the bottom line. Uh, if, if we got, and I put the numbers in here, if we're, if we're going to pay 5% on a $300,000 vehicle, uh, it's worth going after the grant, and it's also worth hiring a grant writer and not put it on someone that's trying to do this as a part-time, um, gig, so, uh, we can reach out. Last year we did, I got some names of grant writers, but it was so late in the process that nobody wanted to take it on. So now that it just opened up, we can go after a grant writer. Um, I think it's just prudent to spend 5% of $300,000 rather than spend $300,000. So, um, if you're, if you're, do I have your permission to keep pursuing this? I mean, I'm not committing any dollars to it right now, I'm just want to pursue getting quotes from grant writers on whether they'll do this.
The only question I have is, this amount of time, does that, is that a viable option? Can you actually get it done by December 8th?
I, I think the, the grant, yeah, because it's just.
Or December 17th?
We waited till like the last week of it last time, so, um, and then, even, whatever happens, we wouldn't find out whether the grant was approved until next year sometime, probably. So really comes down to talking to the fire chief and can this wait, or is this something catastro, if we don't do it right now, then the wheels are going to come off the world kind of thing. Uh, I think he needs to let you guys know that, uh, that assessment of what the current status of that truck is that he wants to trade and, or, or get rid of, and, uh, or can it, can it wait through the grant cycle? Does that make sense?
I'm totally in, in favor of hiring a professional grant writer to help make this happen.
Excuse me, can you folks hear, Dick, back there? You can, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead, Dick.
No, like I just said, I'm totally in favor of getting a professional grant writer to do this. I think, uh, whatever we can do to stack the deck to help in funding this vehicle, because the one thing that I'm going to have a issue with when we could move, when they come in to talk to us about this, is depleting the reserve account, um, to replace this 2006 vehicle, when we've got a 1998 sitting in there that's going to have to be replaced as well, um, in the not-too-distant future, so, you know, I need to, we need to have a very frank conversation about dollars and numbers and what trucks are going to do what mission, so, at any rate, um, using a grant writer to increase the odds of getting a grant to, to, uh, fund 95, 5% of those purchases, the right thing to do.
Okay, Mike?
Mike, is it possible, is this something that, um, Chris Fouracres would be good at doing? Um, I know you said that he was got for the purpose of getting grants for the gr, highway department. Is this something that he could do and help us with to get this?
Yeah, I have no doubt that he has the skills able to, to put the, the grant paperwork together. What he doesn't have is the background and what he's looking at. So it's a lot of data, um, it's data-driven, uh, so as long as the data's available, which it is through NIFRS and, um, but it's, it's a, as I talked to the, uh, the AFG rep last year, it's, it's, it's very competitive, and they recommend a grant writer, just because it's, most of the people that are writing these and, and volunteer departments are doing this when they can, and they're, they just don't have the time to commit to it and make sure that all the cool buzzwords are used and data's accurate.
Just wondering.
Compelling argument, so I don't think, I think he has the ability to put it together, I don't think he has the background of knowing what he's talking about.
Okay, any other questions for Mike on this item?
I was, I was just going to mention, if we could get ahold of Justin, he does a fabulous, fabulous job, but.
But this is very detailed, Bob, he, he has not written something this extensive.
Okay.
I wrote it last year, and it took me just a lot of time to gather the information and then.
This is very good.
Come up with your, your argument, so, um, I, I hear what you're saying, he, he is a really good writer, but this is just a lot more detail than what he's usually used to writing.
Okay.
Joe?
Just a, a short comment, uh, Mike, if it's possible to find a grant writer who wrote a fire department grant for another town, that person would probably have a leg up on the process of learning.
Correct, th, these are what I'm talking about, these are professional people that write for these AFG grants.
Okay, move on, Mike.
Uh, let's see. Uh, page seven, um, I, I know I've talked to somebody about this, but, um, we, we're pretty much, Jonas has really worked tirelessly over the last week to get caught up on, getting the minutes caught up that we're short on the town's website for planning commission, DRB, and, and I think now there's one missing from the Select Board, um, that I'm still working on, it was June of 2021. Um, it was a total failure of a recording, and, um, we're trying, trying to piece it together, so what I, my plan is to send it out to the Select Board and ha, see if you can help me piece together some motions. I have the agenda, I have some notes, but I don't have everything I need to complete the, those set of minutes, but that'll get us caught up on the Select Board side.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Chairman, you, did, did the board receive the updated numbers from the private hauler that uses our transfer station?
Yeah, sorry.
We did.
Right? Yeah, so, so you, so you have the permit numbers, you have the private hauler numbers, now it's figuring how you want to move forward with determining the percentages, if, if you haven't already, uh, because last, last year when I talked to Hubbardon about this, they said, hey, make sure you get it to us before our, our budget season so that we can incorporate it, and I think we're all in budget season now, so not sure what your timeline would be, but I, we're, we're approaching that kind of danger close to.
Yep. Did?
I took a.
Didn't we have some questions, um, questions on those numbers, the percentages and so on earlier in the meeting?
We did.
We did.
As, as they appeared in the minutes.
Yeah.
I think the data that was presented to us earlier seemed clear enough.
When I went through that, uh, when we got this document, the original version of this document, it did not have, um, the Bult Hauling Company numbers in, in as well, it was right around 15% of all the permits sold were Hubbardon and the balance was Castleton, if I recall correctly. It was right around 15, 16%. Now, I just took the last two years here, you know, 2021, 20 to 21 and 21 to 22, and, um, 20 to 21 with the customers from Ed Bult Hauling, uh, Hubbardon is 22.83%, and in 21, 22 to date, they're 25.49%. So at this point, they're, they're contributing 20%, and I'm prepared to recommend that we leave that alone.
Want to make a motion to that?
Um, well, we can have discussion first, your choice.
Pardon?
I don't know if anyone else has any, it's just my opinion.
Oh, any other, okay, before you do that, okay.
My thing is, like Mike said, we're too far into the, into the budget season, you can't go changing it on them, so that would be the only reason I would agree to the 20%, just leave it as it is this year, but we've got to get on it. We can't wait till October or November to start doing this stuff, so. I would say leave it at the 20% deck and then pick it up in the spring or whatever.
Well, we may decide that we want to move it up to 22 or 23%, maybe, you know, we would some more historical data, but at this point in time, I think 20% is at least adequate.
It's too late in the year to do that.
And I agree with Bob, it's too late in the year.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. So permits go on sale in July, so are we talking September, uh, because people start buying their, their permits before July 1st, but they still some that buy it after July 1st? If, I, I want to put something on my calendar, so it reminds me that, hey, I need to get updated figures for you guys, uh, at a certain time next year.
Well, we already have four years of history now.
Yeah.
So we could have a fifth year of history, or well, we have three and a half years of history now, and we'd have four and a half years of history, say, in September of next year, and that's, we could reevaluate it then, that would give Hubbardon two or three months to plan their budget. What do you think? Does that make sense?
Sure.
Or do you want to do it in August, or whatever makes sense to you guys?
I think later, the better, depends on if people hold off, but at least by the end of September, we should be able to have something for them.
I just want, I'm going to put a reminder on my calendar for the beginning of September then, if that works.
I'd, I still like, is Joe still here? Yeah, he's still back there, he's probably not going to want to hear this, but I would still like the idea of, when somebody comes in with a couch or chair, just mark on the slip Castleton or Hubbardon, just have a little box up in each corner and just mark that, so you can get an idea of what you're getting for demo. I mean, you've got two demo boxes, I don't think it's logical to put Castleton in one and Hubbardon into the other, because it, Castleton's going to fill up three times to the Hubbardon's one. Just, you always give them a slip, you always have a slip, when they go, yeah, just mark the slip, and we can get a real good idea on the demo. The garbage would be a little bit harder, but if, if we're talking 85% Castleton and 15% Hubbardon, all the Castleton can go into the, the dumpster, keep the 15% Hubbardon off to the side in a dump body or whatever, and when that gets full running across the scale, you've got to wait right there. You'll know what every box, I, I know it's a little bit more work, but that's the only real way you're going to get it separated and get a real good idea. I mean, you can, you can use the permit numbers, but, well, you don't know what, what our private hauler's customers, if they're buying a permit or not buying a permit, so that you're going to be a little bit off there, you know? And we can't ask him to go out and pick up Hubbardon and bring it in separately from Castleton, you, we'll never get that done, so.
No.
It's not a perfect solution, but I, I just, I just like, Joe, you make up a slip for everybody that comes in, or, or you can, and just check off Castleton, check off Hubbardon, wherever it comes from.
You can.
You can talk any.
Okay, hold it.
No, I, I just wasn't sure, I mean.
Go ahead, Joe.
Come up here so we can hear him.
No, I, I don't, I don't disagree with your idea at all.
Who are you?
I'm Joe, uh, transfer station operator. Um, I, I don't disagree with your idea at all, um, I, I am a firm believer of checks and balances, um, you know, for like Lions Club, for instance, you know, stuff gets brought in, I have specific, you know, I do a slip out for them, so on and so forth, just so we know that's what that came from. Um, but yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a practice that I could, you know, easily start implementing tomorrow, um, as far as, you know, okay, just ask them what town you're from, it's not a big deal, there's an address slide right on the, on the slip, so, you know, it's, it's a good idea, and as far as garbage, I mean, if, you know, somebody's got a mixed batch and they're from Hubbardon, I honestly, I don't have a problem with saying, okay, hit the scale with your demo and then rescale for your trash. I, I really don't have a problem with that. Um, people, people take me pretty well, um, I can, you know, normally get people to, you know, do what they ask, you know, present it the right way.
Okay, thank you, Joe, appreciate it.
Even if we did it for a six-month period, January 1st to June 30th.
Yeah.
You'd have those numbers, you could figure out the rest of the year.
Okay. What is the consensus of the board for budget purposes for next year?
Well, this coming fiscal year, I don't think at this point it would be fair to Hubbardon to ask them to do anything different than what they're expecting to do.
That's 80/20?
Yes.
80/20?
And that's pretty close to whatever real is.
It is, yep, okay. Do you want to make that in the form of a motion?
Do we need a motion? I mean, we're not changing anything.
If you don't think you need a motion.
We're doing what we've been doing for 10 or 15 years, nobody really knows when this started.
Okay, we don't need a motion, we'll move on.
Just let, let Hubbardon know, Mike, that.
I will, yeah.
Status quo.
Yep. Anything else, Mike?
Uh, I am meeting, just so the board knows, I'm meeting with Green Mountain Power and the, an engineer from, uh, I forgot his name, not it, the engineer that's working on the scoping study at Stasi Road on Wednesday to look at the salt and sand shed, um, placement and to walk the, uh, property with Green Mountain Power on the location of the power poles and the, all those do's and don'ts in it that are in easement. Um, so that's going to happen on Wednesday, and the last week of the sidewalk project should be coming up here. If nothing goes wrong, um, they should be done in a week.
Any other questions for Mike? Jonas?
I want to go back, uh, to something Mike said about minutes missing and all that.
I don't know.
In my short experience here, the planning commission has gone through six secretaries, count new. I mean, you've also reached out, and then people have responded to the ads saying they would do it, and then they, then backed out. Because on the view board, somewhere, same, same, same thing there, but having said all that, I think when you're talking about budgeting, I think you need to make it worthwhile for someone to, to do that. So, I, I just want to chime in on that, because technology, you know, when I've had to run Zoom meetings, I can't tell you how many times that when I've I can't tell you how many times that when I've connected to Zoom, all of a sudden, Microsoft decides to run an update, I've lost the entire Zoom thing. And, you know, and I'm, I'm taking notes, but not minutes. And so, for your budgeting purposes, I would suggest you update.
I haven't, so, it rains, it pours, Jonas. Today, we had two people want to take minutes.
Oh, great.
For meetings. We brokered a deal with one. It's, she's done it in the past, it was Allison Hardy. She is committed to doing that.
Great.
And I have a backup now if that doesn't work out. And I also, for my budget for, that I proposed to the select board next meeting, I have up the amount to pay them to, because the one that's, Allison, we've already talked about salary and it's certainly not, it's way below what people are looking for, I can tell you that, so.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Jonas. Joe, did you have something?
A couple things, try to be real quick on your first point, Mike. The Treasury FAQ specifically mentions at one point sidewalks as eligible ARPA expenditure. On page two, under Better Communications Grant, you mentioned the SWAT analysis had fewer than 300 people responding. I know they feel bad about that. We're hoping for a much higher participation rate, but I'm not sure that that's realistic. And I think if we were to survey some other towns that had done those kinds of citizen participation processes, they might not find they're getting better participation than we did. So, maybe we should accept what that was and move on. The, just wanted to mention the dispatching costs. What is the timeline? When do we get, when does that, the rate of dispatching costs increase for fire and police?
That has been suspended right now, Joe, so it's, it's got, put on the back burner.
Great, glad to hear that. Thank you, that's it.
Okay, anything else for Mike?
I have one question. Mike, on the, on the ARCA money, and I don't know what the board thought, is on the sidewalk out front here, I really think that sidewalk should be turned to the west and brought back down here to this road here and end it. I think it's really kind of a tough design to have the sidewalk go right by here and then you end it right in the middle of that road coming out of either here or next door for the medical center. I really think it should be turned and, even if we don't go down to this road, but at least turn and let people walk down and get them away from the intersection and causing a problem, because you're gonna end up, you're gonna dump everybody right in the middle of that road. I had a thought about that, if we could do it. Let Mike see how much it'll cost to have them do that.
Anything else for Mike? If not, we'll move on to purchase orders for approval. We have one from, two from the Castleton Fire Department, I believe.
I can make a motion for one purchase order number 047669 for $2,235 to Levi Communications, or Levitt Communications.
Is there a second? Second? Is there a discussion?
Do we need to list, mention what it's for? Is it, is that Monitor VI pagers?
Minitor six pagers.
Minitor, okay. Six or five, Mike?
Six.
It's a, it's a, the model's a six.
Oh, okay.
It's a Roman numeral.
Five number six, five, six pages.
Okay. That's in the budget every year.
Okay, all those in favor of approving that purchase order indicate by saying aye.
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 Who seconded that?
I did.
Joe did.
We have a second one here?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve purchase order 047186 to the Castleton Volunteer Fire Department for their points fund of $9,000.
Is there a second?
Second?
And a second, discussion?
I need to recuse myself.
I need to refuse myself?
Lucky there's three of us here.
Yes.
Three others.
Lucky for you.
Right. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Now, we go to warrants. I'm gonna pass those back, the originals back over to me.
I did. You just put them on top of your, those are two of those originals, right?
No, these are the purchase orders.
Yeah, here's the warrants right here.
That's what I want.
Oh, okay. You ready, Mr. Chairman?
Ready.
Make a motion, we approve warrant number 1108R for $650. Warrant number 1108 for $229,913.72. Warrant 1104 for $5,715.11. Warrant 1028 for $32,676.49. Warrant 1104P for $16,153.87. And warrant number 1028P for $16,566.74.
I'll second that.
Second, discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the warrants that were presented, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Dis opposed?
Make a motion, make a motion to approve number 1105P for $628.33. And number 1029P for $628.33.
I'll second it.
Second, discussion?
I'll recuse myself.
Recuse yourself. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. There you go, Bob.
Jim, just a question. These purchase orders wouldn't be in these warrants already, but they-
No.
No, they're different.
No, it shouldn't be.
The warrant for the points fund should be a separate warrant next time around. I wanted to ask the town manager to make sure that happens.
Is that in the regular-
That is not, I double-checked that. It's not in the warrants that we approved tonight.
Okay.
Because if it has, I would, it would have made things more complicated.
And the reason why that is, is because they're members of the fire department, so they're voting on paying themselves, so that's why they're recusing themselves.
Yeah, that's, so, yeah, the, just so you know, purchase order and the check warrants are different things. The purchase order is the authorization to buy something. And the check warrant is the authorization to pay for it. And we have to do, anything over a certain dollar amount, we have to approve the purchase. And then any expenditure, whether it's $4 or $4 million, we have to approve it. So, unfortunately, you know, welcome to Vermont statutes.
Is this yours?
No. Where'd you get that from? Okay, a budget, that's a-
You recognize your wife's fingerprints all over them.
No, that's, that's not, that's Jane Nicola's writing, I think. She might still left it there. That is a public property. I mean, anyone is welcome to it if they want to ask for it. Not sure either.
There you go, okay.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, is there anyone on Zoom who would like to address the board, seeing as we had some technical problems here? I guess not. Thank you very much.
There's a couple here Mike didn't sign. Mike, did you not sign these on purpose?
I signed them all, I thought.
No, I got two here, you don't have your name on them. They got your name, not your signature. All right, this could be a team sport.
Those are the two that you haven't.
Oh, I must have been hiding them.
So, hang on, Richard. You signed for me.
They're plums.
Not for yourself, so.
See?
How do we do that? Yeah, I don't know what the heck I was doing.
I'm gonna cross this out.
Sure.
Why don't you cross that out and initial it? Do the same on that.
Yeah, I don't know what the heck I was thinking. I got distracted. I think it's the first time I've ever done that.
Probably won't be the last.
We should have a total of eight, Joe. How many, how many you got? I got two.
Your time is ticking down, your time is ticking down.
And two?
Six, seven, eight.
Thanks. Thanks, Tom.
Don't have to take your shoes off. Don't have to take your shoes off either.
Okay, moving on to select board comments or concerns. Any members of the board have concerns or comments? Mike?
Mike Jones, I had a question on, you rented a lift to do some work at the transfer station for cleaning?
Yep.
And then you were gonna do more at the town office. What happened with that?
I didn't get to it, because I was doing minutes all weekend. So, Joe-
Because that should have been planned out a little different then?
I'm not really sure if that would have helped, but Joe, Joe texted me and said he would do some on Sunday, so he did.
I saw him up here doing it Sunday, that's what made me think of it, so.
Good intentions, rode the house, paid the good intention, Mike.
I've heard that one, that's my father's favorite saying.
Anything else, Mike?
I'm good.
Bob?
Just had a quick question, since Joe is here. Did you pick up that new roll-off box? Coming from Premier Recycling or something?
Not yet.
Where is that located, Joe? That was my only question.
New Hampshire.
Seabrook, New Hampshire.
Seabrook?
Yeah, and last I communicated with them was last week, and, no, week before, sorry. And they were just starting on mid-August orders.
Okay.
Yeah, they're, everybody's smooth behind because of material, so, we're probably looking, I figured the end of the month, the end of this month, we should hear.
Okay. My biggest thing is where, where you had to go get it, because I didn't know where they were located, so.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else, Bob?
Um, have all the, all the sidewalks been painted, Mike?
No.
No?
The what? The sidewalks? The crosswalk? Sorry, I'm, I'm missing something there. No, the ones that were in the middle of the village got painted.
Okay.
Which the paint's almost off them now, so it was almost like-
But you can still see them.
I had, I had a taxpayer comment that you were using depth, deck paint or something, I don't know.
We were using outdoor paint from, you can't get new paint from anywhere else.
Is the college gonna do anything with their crosswalks up there?
Not right now.
They're not doing anything with them? How about the flashing lights? They make even little ones like that, that are pretty, have they looked into that?
It's all part of that scoping study, Bob, that's going on.
So, I have to wait?
Well, I mean, who's gonna pay for it is the question. Last, when I met with the university, with Chuck LaVoy, head of security, Keith Monary, our police chief, our highway department foreman, we all agreed that we, we needed to do something. And what we agreed on is doing the scoping study and trying to get permanent fixtures there, so students can cross the road safely and it's in the, it's in the process. I mean, the last, we had an update from them, from them last month, in October. So, it's ongoing. As far as like, at the university, are they gonna do anything to put lights up? I don't know, but nothing's gonna happen with the painting right now.
If we can, Mike, if we can, can we at least, I know it's getting late, but can we at least get the one down on South Street and North Road painted, at least so the college kids can, either they can see the ends of it and people know that there's kids in there that want to cross.
The one, the one that goes across the road?
All the way across. I mean, I go through there every day and it's just, you can't see it. And if the kids get down in it, I mean, people are gonna get mad and it's not the kids' fault. They have a right to cross that road and that, and you can see the lines on each end at the very edge of the road are there. So, we just need to do the middle just to make it safer for the kids.
Okay, Dick?
I'm good. You already got mine. Town manager's report.
Joe?
I have a question for our audience. How many of you had an easy time finding the driveway tonight?
It's a bear to fall for pulling here.
I think, I don't know whose responsibility it is, but that's a very dark turn these days and-
I'm here, Joe.
Yeah.
I almost missed it coming to a fire.
I did look into that, Joe, because we put a light right here and I asked about putting a light right there.
Can't see it.
There wasn't a pole that, that the Green Mountain Power was, they did the one right here. And we had to reset it, put a new pole in, so we want to pay for the pole, we certainly could, I could pursue that.
Well, it would help if, if the health center had better lighting on its sign.
Yeah.
Because right now, it's, it's very poorly lit. And I don't know whether it's vegetation that has to be cut back or brighter bulb, but, better aimed bulb, but I think that would be an immediate fix that would be helpful, short of putting in a new pole.
I had more than one time when I had a hard time finding that turn on a way with a fire call.
Are you blinded by the, the light from where the sign is?
The opposite.
You can't see the turn.
I know it's dark, I mean, I've driven a fire truck on the grass there, so.
That's it for me.
Okay. We'll move on now to an executive session dealing with real estate.
You got recap? Pardon, you already did recap?
I did, yeah. Yeah. Oh, are there any items for recap and follow-up? Seeing none, we'll now move on to executive session for real estate. Thank you all for coming, we appreciate it.
Thank you.